Good afternoon. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting will begin at around 7:00 p.m. B, Public Comment on Closed Session Items. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed-session agenda items. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on closed-session agenda items?
There is no public comment on closed-session items.
Thank you. Seeing that there are none, the board will now adjourn into closed session. Thank you. Okay. Good evening. My name is Eve Reiser, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Francisco Mesa and Ashley Heil. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions.
Buenas tardes y bienvenidos a todos. Los servicios de interpretación simultánea están disponibles para esta reunión. Para escuchar en español, en un momento va a haber un icono de globo terráqueo en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Una vez que aparezca, haga clic en el icono y luego seleccione la opción de escuchar en español. Muchas gracias, y la reunión comenzará en breve.
Thank you. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vetta Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, Student Board Member Riley?
Present.
Trustee Reiser?
Present.
Trustee Hart?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Or un-present. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight for our NVUSD Board meeting. E1, Report on Closed Session. Trustee Hart, do you have a report on closed-session agenda items?
I do. Item number D1, Student Matters, with respect to every item of business to be discussed in closed session pursuant to ED Code 35146 and 4891220, Government Code Section 49060 and 49078, and the Family Rights and Privacy Act. Item A, the board recommends for the expulsion of student 04102025A.
Ms. Morales, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Trustee Reiser?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we need a motion when we?
Yes.
Okay. May I please have a motion for this matter?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first from Trustee Water, second from Trustee Hart. Thank you. Now, Ms. Morales can have a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item D1B, the board recommends the request for students' dual enrollment for student And then item D2A, Personnel in Closed Session. The board took action to approve the following staff recommendations effective for the 2025-2026 school year. Item 1, on a motion by Trustee Water and a second by myself, the board voted to appoint Melissa Phillips to the position of principal at McPherson Elementary School. Report of votes are: Trustee Reiser, aye; Trustee Chu, absent; Trustee Gonzalez-Morris, absent; Trustee Hart, aye; Trustee Jankowicz, aye; Trustee Martin, absent; Trustee Water, aye. D2A2, on a motion by myself and a second by Trustee Water, the board voted to appoint Alejandra Uribe to the position of director; three, multilingual learners and parent engagement. Report of votes: Trustee Reiser, aye; Trustee Chu, absent; Trustee Gonzalez-Morris, absent; Trustee Hart, aye; Trustee Jankowicz, aye; Trustee Martin, absent; Trustee Water, aye.
Thank you very much.
And we'd like to take a moment and invite our promoted, current NVUSD administrators to their new positions. So, welcome to Ms. Melissa Phillips again, the newly appointed principal for McPherson Elementary, coming to us from Snow. And Ms. Phillips, if you'd like to come to the podium and address the board.
Good evening, President Reiser, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Rosanna Masetti, and the Executive Board. I would like to start by thanking you for the honored opportunity to lead the extraordinary school that is McPherson Elementary Magnet. Your confidence in me is not lost, and rest assured that I am dedicated and committed to McPherson Magnet community. It is important that I recognize and give my deepest gratitude to Principal Jessica Mountner and the incredible Snow Elementary staff and community, who have been a constant support as I stepped into the community's school administrator role two years ago. Snow has been the pinnacle example of what it means to be a site that truly values belonging and inclusion, and for this and so much more, I thank them all from the bottom of my heart. I would be remiss if I did not take time to give my appreciation and acknowledgement to the mentorship and leadership opportunities given to me by Marilyn Avalon and the Donaldson Way Dragon family. Their support and belief in my strengths have led me here today and helped craft me into the leader that I am. Most of all, I would like to take the opportunity to thank my family who are here with me. Their unyielding love and support has been a blessing, and I am eternally thankful to them. McPherson Magnet Elementary is a school that places its pride in its commitment to growth and student achievement, in developing skills and confidences, and in their partnership with the community. These foundational values are why I am eager and proud, very proud, to join the Monarch family. McPherson's mission to cultivate students who learn from their past and who work hard in their present to build successful futures gives me no doubt that together, we can continue to support students and families in building their bright futures. Thank you again.
Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. Phillips. And next, we have our current Principal of Unidos Middle School, Ms. Alejandra Uribe, who is going to become future Doctora Alejandra Uribe soon, and the new Director of Multilingual Learners and Family Engagement.
Good evening, President Reiser, Board Members, and Executive Board. I am incredibly excited and honored to formally accept the position of Director of Multilanguage Learners and Parent Engagement. I want to express my sincere gratitude to you and the entire team for this amazing opportunity. I am passionate about supporting multilanguage learners and their families, and I'm eager to bring my skills and my enthusiasm to this role. I look forward to closely working with the Instructional Division team to create an inclusive, supportive environment where all students and their families feel valued, heard, and empowered to thrive. Once again, thank you for this amazing opportunity, and I'm looking forward to leading this incredible work with the wonderful team members from the Instructional Team. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations, Ms. Uribe. Okay, that brings us to E2, Flag Salute, and I'm going to invite our Student Board Member Riley Grayden, newly turned 18, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is livestreamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district's YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. E4, Approval of Agenda.
Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you. I have a first from Trustee Hart, second from Trustee Water. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. E5, Approval of Minutes. We have the March 13, 2025 minutes.
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a first from Trustee Hart, second by Trustee Water. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes, or agenda passes. March 17, minutes, 2025?
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a first from Trustee Hart, a second from Trustee Water. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Abstain? Thank you. And lastly, the minutes from March 27, 2025?
Move to approve?
Second.
First from Trustee Hart, second from Trustee Water. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes, or minutes are approved. E6, Recognition of Visitors and Employee Organizations. Dr. Masetti, do we have any visitors in attendance?
I do not see any of our union leaders here. Except I think I saw...
One right here.
One moment. I think I saw Trevor. Is that you, Trevor, from CSC? Or Travis, sorry. I'm sorry. I said Trevor, Travis. Did you want to address the board tonight, or are you just here?
Um, I was just here.
You're just here? Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much for being here. I know that you're part of the leadership team that works with CSCA President Jackie Clayton, so thank you for your presence. And I also want to welcome, I saw in the audience, NCOE trustee Nadine Wade Gravitt, right? Wade Gravitt? Hi. So, good to see you. Thank you so much for being here. Would you like to come up and address the board, trustee Wade Gravitt?
Thanks for coming. I didn't put in just...
Oh, is that your comment? Just an introduction? Okay.
But I can do it now if you want.
That's fine with us. Welcome, and thank you for coming.
First of all, I like to, I'm following Cindy Waters' lead. She came, she came to, I have a teacher's voice. She came to our meeting, and I just wanted to let her know that I appreciated it, and I appreciate the communication that has taken place. So, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Nadine Wade. I go by Nadine Wade Gravitt sometimes, depending on who I'm with. And I now represent, I recently got appointed to represent Area 4, that has some of the Napa schools in it. And I come from a long road of education here in the valley. I was a longtime administrator, 42-plus years at Napa Valley College, and full-time faculty, and I'm back actually teaching part-time now as well. So, and I had kids in our system here, both at Napa High and at Vintage. And I took part early on in the establishment of New Tech High. I was on the planning committee for that, so I take great pride in following those students. I have students now that are dual-enrolled in my health class, and I love having the Unified Schools members, students in my classes. And I was also part of the booster, president of the booster club. But I'm here today just to say that as my role in trustee, I look forward to working with you all, and hope that we can continue to benefit and promote the goals and, you know, our students. It's where we belong. It's why we're in this business, and so I look forward to working with you. And I would stay, because she stayed our whole meeting, but I actually have, my brother flew in from New York today, and I have to go home to him.
That's okay.
So, I appreciate, and I look forward to anybody reaching out to me, and if you have concerns, I'd love to hear it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Wade, and thank you for coming. You're welcome anytime. Okay, so that brings us to item F on the agenda, Recognition of Students of the Month. F1, American Canyon High School. Principal Hatton, please present the Students of the Month.
Is the microphone still on? Okay. Good evening, President Reiser, Dr. Masetti, and the board. I'd like to actually invite Eric Uraina to come and do this introduction for Sandy Diana Barondo Sanchez. I'll just note that as we discussed our Students of the Month, we, for her, we felt that she embodies the confident and affirming self-champion characteristic of our graduate profile. So, Eric will be introducing her and translating.
Good evening, buenas tardes, buenas noches. Esteemed Board Members, Dr. Masetti, Executive Staff, Audience Members. I am Eric Uraina. I am the MLL Lead over at ACHS, and I'm very honored and proud to be in front of all of you to introduce Diana. Diana has been with me for less than a year. She's one of our newcomers. She's in our ELD program, Level 1, but I feel like throughout the months that I've had the pleasure to work with her, she's been able to move forward in that level, and I'm hoping, I know she's our senior, so hopefully she continues the practices that I've been able to teach her. I've had a little help within the introduction. I've had Mrs. Susan Wilson, who is also working as a home hospital teacher. Diana has had a lot of mishaps throughout the time that we've had her in our classroom medically, but, you know, I think that defines really who she is. She has given a lot of strength, resilience, and I want to put emphasis on strength because she comes in into our classrooms with a big smile, no matter what she's going through, and I think that's very seen throughout the time that we have with her. So, without further ado, I would like to introduce Diana. And I'll be translating.
Good evening, NVUSD Board Members and Dr. Masetti. My name is Diana Sanchez. I am senior at ACHS. I am delighted to be here with you, my family, and friends. La escuela ha sido muy importante para mí porque ha sido como el primer hobby que he encontrado cuando llegué a este país, aparte de estar en el hospital, que es divertido también.
So, she's saying that school has been a big part of her journey here, and it's one of her favorite hobbies, to actually go to school. She also states that going to the hospital is also fun for her, so she sees joy in both of those things.
Uno de mis más grandes desafíos ha sido tener la misma enfermedad que mi abuelo materno, ya que lo consideraba como un complemento muy especial para mí en mi vida. Al igual que mi abuela materna, mi enfermedad ha sido muy complicada. He tenido que pasar por muchas cosas desde que personas me hablaron de una manera muy fuerte para la edad que tenía hasta encontrarme con personas que me quisieran mucho y que me hicieran sentir muy especial y que valía la pena seguir luchando. No es fácil ser una paciente renal crónica en una fase terminal, más porque he sido una persona que ha sido muy independiente y que le gusta mucho estar en la escuela y ser muy puntual con lo que tengo que cumplir. Y al no estar por tener citas médicas o cosas importantes de mi enfermedad, me ha costado mucho tenerme la paciencia para tener que hacer tanto lo de la escuela y ser buen estudiante como buena paciente.
So, one of the challenges that she's been able to overcome is with her medical problem that she's going through right now, similar to her grandparent, maternal grandparent. And, you know, the challenges that she's facing is being on time, but she's persevering at the same time, both in school and at her medical appointments as well. Even though that's a big challenge for her, she tries to be positive in all of it, and that's why she's always had that smile on her face.
También uno de mis sueños y esperanzas ha sido tener mi transplante de riñón, ser psicóloga, para poder ayudar a personas que tienen problemas igual que yo. También regresar a Guatemala y abrazar a mis familiares, porque son unas personas muy importantes en mi vida, porque me acompañaron durante todo el proceso de, ya casi dos años que llevo con mi enfermedad.
So, one of, some of the hopes and dreams for her future is that she would love to have her transplant, her kidney transplant, something that happens. She wants to be a psychologist, and she would love to return to Guatemala and hug her family members, and also to have a job and buy her dream house that will make her happy forever.
La escuela me ha ayudado mucho desde que los maestros me enseñen sus materias, hasta que me saquen una sonrisa o me ayuden en cualquier cuestión que tenga que ser, en especial Mister Uraina, que ha sido muy, como muy especial para mí, porque me ha acompañado durante todo lo que tengo que hacer, desde conseguir una maestra que, con la que yo me llevara bien para estudiar desde casa, hasta siempre hacer su clase muy divertida y que sea bonito estar en ella.
So, she's very grateful and happy to have school as one of her major supports. She did point out me, myself, and of course, her home hospital teacher, Mrs. Wilson, to help her every step of her way through her journey within academics and also with her help.
También quiero agradecer a la principal, a Mister Uraina, por traerme aquí, también a mis papás, Wendy Sanchez y Boris García, quienes me han acompañado desde estar noches muy largas en el hospital hasta estar en este tipo de momentos conmigo y nunca hacerme sentir que estoy sola. Y también a mis hermanos Joshua y Natalie, que están ahí, que también, a veces los molesto, pero son los mejores hermanos que puedo tener, porque me han sacado una sonrisa en los peores momentos que he tenido.
She's very thankful for Principal Ms. Hatton, and myself, and Ms. Wilson, for allowing her to be here today. She also wants to give thanks to her family members, especially Mom and Dad, and her brother and sister, even though she loves to bother them a lot, and that's what brings her that smile to her face during her hardest times. So, she's very grateful to be here.
También a mis abuelos maternos, porque a pesar de que pues no están ahora conmigo, siempre me han hecho sentir muy especial y muy querido por ellos, y gracias a ellos es que yo tengo la iniciativa de siempre estar bien en la escuela y lograr mis sueños y mis metas, y porque también me han hecho ser fuerte y muy valiente. Y yo sé que mi abuelo inicialmente está aquí, porque él murió, pero él siempre está conmigo, entonces lo quiero mucho.
And lastly, she wants to give thanks to her maternal grandparents, especially her grandfather, for all the support and for her being here. She would have not done that with their support. And her grandfather did pass away, so she's very happy to be here, in a way dedicating this to her. Thank you all so much.
Okay. Let me see, I have a scan. Okay. If you could just...
Okay. fresh off the amazing production of Hattie's Town, if anyone had a chance to see it as Hattie's. The words that keep coming to, when Ms. Hart nominated him, and as we looked at a candidate who is really ready for adulthood in the real world, Ryan is a curious and bright talent. He's been part of the publicity team. He has a rich creative life. He's a thespian officer. And Ms. Hart notes that he is one of the most motivated and creative collaborators she's ever had as a student. The trailer videos that you may have seen, if you follow ACHS Theater, are top-notch, professional quality, and he is very, very creative in terms of, he has short films published on YouTube, garnered over 36,000 subscribers. He continues to dive deeper into filmmaking, research, and collaboration. He consistently shows enthusiasm and positive energy, and then he's also a link crew leader, so working with incoming freshmen to help orient them, smooth their transition to high school. He has a friendly and easygoing way of interacting with his peers, and makes him very popular with very diverse social groups. I haven't had a long time, you know, as a first-year principal, to get to know Ryan, and I'm actually kind of sad that he's leaving so soon, but it sounds like he's going to have an incredible career in filmmaking. So, without further ado, I will introduce Ryan.
That was a great introduction. I don't know if I can follow that one up. Hi, everyone. I want to thank the NVUSD School Board for allowing me this opportunity. My name is Ryan Cooper. I'm a senior at American Canyon High School. On campus, as Principal Hatton mentioned, I'm a link crew leader, which is a leadership program run by Ms. Goff and Ms. Vu, which is dedicated to helping freshmen grow accustomed to high school. I've also been involved in the drama program for all four years, which has allowed me to branch out creatively, being both behind the scenes and getting used to being in the spotlight. We recently finished our production of the musical Hattie's Town, where I portrayed the lead villain role, Hattie's. It's very fun. That musical was directed by REC Drama Teacher Ms. Hart, who nominated me for this position, so I want to thank her. One of the biggest challenges I've had to face during high school is balancing school with my personal creative projects, because it's hard to find time for both, and it's very frustrating having to fit that in my schedule, and I have to be very intentional with how I spend my time in order to make that work. But doing so has shaped me to the person I am now, and allowed me to get into the college I may have chosen, my choice, USC, and plan to, more specifically, majoring in film and television production for a School of Cinematic Arts. USC is known for being one of the best and competitive film schools in the world. It's also known as being one of the most expensive schools out there. So, if anyone has any information on scholarships, just let me know. In the future, I'd like to direct films, act, sing, or do anything creative, really. Lastly, I want to thank Ms. Hatton, Dr. Masetti, and the NVUSD School Board for giving me this opportunity. I want to thank my teachers for their passion about what they do and what they teach. Thank you to my friends for their support and ability to make school less repetitive and unique every day. And I want to thank my mom and dad for caring so much about my education. And yeah, I could lose my speech. Thank you.
Wow. Congratulations. Don't forget us.
Yeah. When he's walking those red carpets.
Well, congratulations to our American Canyon Students of the Month, and now, can we please have Principal Ainsworth present the Students of the Month from Napa High?
So, good evening. It's wonderful to be back. I apologize for my voice and the sniffles. The allergies have finally caught up to me. Tonight, we have two incredible students, the first of which is, the first thing you will notice is a radiant smile that warms up every room that she walks into. And as you get to know her, you find that she's this incredible combination of curious and audacious. And I did ask her permission to share a short story. Last year, my incredible athletic director, Darcy Ward, came in to me and said, hey, Ian, we've got a situation that I just need to make sure you're aware of. We have someone who has joined the water polo team that doesn't know how to swim. And I'm like, wait, what? And she's like, well, she wanted to learn to swim, and she wants to play water polo, so she came out and tried out, and our coach said okay, and taught her to swim, and by the end of the season, she was playing in games, swimming, and that's kind of the perfect vision of who she is. There's not much she's not afraid to go do. She's active in just about everything, and it's a pure joy to have her on campus, and it's my privilege to... and it's my privilege to introduce to you Maria Mosconi.
Oh, my God. Just a second. Okay. Good evening, uh, oh, my God. Okay. Good evening, members of the School Board Staff Family Inference. I hope you are all having a wonderful night. My name is Maria Mosconi Carrion. I'm a junior at, yeah, I'm a junior at Napa High and I am truly honored to be recognized as an NVUSD Student of the Month. First, I want to express my gratitude to God in all his forms and manifestations. Thank you, Mom and Dad, for always believing in me, for your love, your time, and trust. Thank you to my principal, my counselor, my teachers, and all my classmates who've helped shape who I am. Thank you to the School Board and Napa High for this incredible honor. I came to the U.S. from Mexico in 2020 during COVID-19. It wasn't easy and everything was new. The language, culture, people, but Napa High welcomed me. I've grown so much academically and personally since. This year, I've taken both honors French and AP Spanish at the same time while also challenging myself with physics and precalculus. I've received excellent, excellent awards in several subjects and some of my favorite academic moments having in social science classes. Outside the classroom, I think I've played soccer, water polo, and lacrosse. I have the honor of being a team captain in all three. These experiences have taught me the value of resilience, leadership, and teamwork. After high school, my goal is simple, to keep learning. Education is and always will be the best way for all of us, no matter our background, to move forward. Along the way, I've learned that knowledge is power, but humility is, is knowing that there's always more to learn. I'm proud of how far I've come, but I know that growth wasn't mine alone. It came from those who believe in me. Their support taught me to dream big but stay grounded. Because being humble isn't about thinking less of yourself, it is about remembering that we rise by lifting others. Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, and our second, uh, Student of the Month, as you can see, Maria just came from lacrosse. As the game ended, she came straight here. Our second student, Drew, it plays baseball and they had an away game today at Petaluma that wrapped up really late and they are still in traffic. So, um, in anticipation that that might happen, he did write a speech that I'd like to read. Uh, but first, I think I'd like to make sure I give you a small picture of who Drew is, and this was written by Mr. Chatham as both his English teacher and varsity baseball coach. And Mr. Chatham said, "If you had a lab where you could design a human being from scratch to be the best of humanity, it is my belief that the lab would produce something like Drew Herbert. Drew is kind, empathetic, hardworking, resilient, tough, amicable, competitive, and humble. And as his baseball coach, I can attest to his athletic ability as well. He's a star." One of the best things I have heard come from another teacher when they were surprised Drew was such a good baseball player, they said Drew was so humble and unassuming as a personality in class that he didn't have the overt overconfidence that sometimes you see with outstanding athletes. This is who Drew is. He doesn't need to tell you how good he is, he's simply that good. To be this good of a student and person, to have a 4.6 GPA and bat 400 on the varsity baseball team is unheard of, he says Drew for president. So, from Mr. Chatham. So, I'd like to just briefly read, if it's okay, um, Drew's speech, um, in his dry humor, you will pick up because he immediately asks, first, he'd like to recognize his family and if they're here, and he's disappointed that no one showed up for him. Um, he'd like to extend a huge thanks to the School Board for bestowing this honor upon me. I've been in NVUSD for a while, as a young boy at Northwood, as a dorky adolescent at Redwood, and as a young adult at Napa High. I've gotten to where I am now because of the supportive environment my parents give and my hunger to learn, which has led me to enjoy all my classes and stay on top of my work. I also have participated in baseball and basketball, in which I've made many new friends and learned how to allot my time. My most memorable time of community service was when I went down to LA with my church to minister to the impoverished and it really opened my eyes to both sides of the city. It truly puts everything in perspective. After high school, I plan on pursuing baseball at a college and then going to a STEM field. I would consider going to places like UC Davis, Cal Poly, San Luis Obispo, obviously, UC Santa Cruz, or UC Santa Barbara, to name a few. I like nature and the beach, if you couldn't tell. But Napa High holds a special place in my heart, whether it be from the caring teachers, the fun spirit days, or going to the football games, we might finally win one. But the togetherness and welcoming culture will remain with me for years to come. All of it reinforces my decision to come to Napa High School and helps me become the person that I am today. I have truly enjoyed my time here and the friends I have made are ones that will last a while. I'd like to again thank the School Board for this honor. I am so grateful and while I can't be here to tell you, hopefully you can still feel my gratitude. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ainsworth, and congratulations to the Students of the Month from Napa High and American Canyon. Thank you for being here. Good night. Okay, um, this brings us to item G. Public comment on non-agenda items. Trustee Hart, did we receive any public comment on non-agenda items via email?
No public comments on non-agenda items were submitted via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org before 8:00 a.m. this morning.
Thank you. Um, I have an announcement. Before I open the floor to public comment on non-agenda items, I'd like to explain the rules that govern this area of the meeting. The Brown Act open meeting laws under which we're required to operate prohibit board members from discussing items that you may bring up that are not on our current agenda. The reason for this legal restriction is to make sure that anyone who has an interest in a particular district business matter knows through the board's posted agenda when we will be discussing it as a board so that they can also be present and provide input on the item. We're very happy to have you here to let us know your concerns. Please know that while we cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, we're listening to your voices and we expect and know that our staff will follow up with us on issues raised by members of the community. Relevant to the remainder of the board agenda, please understand that the board listens and considers public comment on the agendized items during our meeting. However, public comment is not intended to be a two-way dialogue between the public and board members and/or staff, and therefore trustees will not respond to individual comments. This is in accordance with our meeting procedures. We invite members of the public to provide input via public comment per our Board Bylaw 9323 regarding meeting agenda items. We welcome and appreciate the public's engagement and input. In sum, please know that your voice matters and makes a difference. Your public comment on agendized items might be referenced during our discussions and will be considered as we make decisions regarding agendized items. Um, in accordance with our bylaws, I want to remind the public that the board shall limit the total time for public input to 20, oh, wait, this is not, I'm sorry, we don't need to read that one. So we have only one public comment in the, uh, in the boardroom tonight in public, uh, Mr. Arthur Russo. You approach the microphone. I'm sorry, that was misleading. Um, every public comment is three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Arthur Russo. I am the foreperson of the, uh, this year's grand jury, civil grand jury. And as grand jury, we decided this year to make what we do a little bit more public than it generally is as we put reports on the website and they kind of die there and so we thought we would, um, be more public with the fact that they are out there and, um, invite, uh, citizens to read it. Um, we do have a report that, that, um, happens to affect this particular body, um, currently regarding, um, bond financing. And what I'd like to do, um, is to read the findings that, um, we have come to based on that. But one quick question I can get in. Um, I know that you can't answer it, but, um, if you actually could email me, I know, President Wright, you have my email, um, whether or not you need a hard copy of the report. Um, so for the findings, um, we found that, that bond financing is in fact the primary source of funding for addressing capital needs, uh, that the NVUSD website is complex and it's difficult to navigate to find bond financing data. Um, additionally, um, that although charging, um, NVUSD employees' salaries against the bond funds, it's permissible in limited cases that is probably reducing public trust because of the bond, um, language in every case says no salaries will be charged against this money. Um, the fourth finding that we had was that, uh, NVUSD does not adequately inform the general public that citizen bond oversight committees play a critical role in satisfying Prop 39's requirement for oversight. Um, and additionally, that the, um, citizen oversight committee does not have thorough, um, and independent training. And finally, the facility master plan, which is coming up for creation, the previous one, uh, had limited public participation. We did, however, make a commendation for the oversight committees who are doing a very good job of actually over, uh, doing the oversight on bond funding. Um, I would like to also mention the recommendations, but I have 30 seconds left. Can I get an extra 30 seconds? Okay, so you can cut me off when you need to cut me off, but the, um, recommendations is that, um, that the NVUSD should maintain an ongoing campaign, um, using multiple media outlets to inform the general public about what happens to the bond funds. Um, one of the things that we noted was that bond measures generally, um, measures passed very narrowly and that, um, this community outreach may in fact increase public trust and, um, make, um, citizens have a better sense of what they're actually voting for.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. I appreciate your presence here. Thank you.
And just to follow up, Mr. Russo, we've received copies of the report and we will be responding in accordance with the timeline. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, this brings us to H Reports. H1, Board of Education and Student Board Representative. Uh, Student Board Member Grayden, would you like to kick stuff?
Of course. Um, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's having a great night, evening, okay. Um, it's been a while since I've been here, so let me go over everything that I've done. Uh, so on March 20th, I had a track meet at Napa High School. March 25th, I attended the Donaldson Way groundbreaking. Uh, March 27th, I wasn't at the meeting because I was at a track meet at Petaluma High School. March 31st, I turned 18 years old. Um, we also, we also saw, um, Hades Town in class, so an amazing shout out to all of our drama students because everyone's saying that it was the best production that ACHS has ever done and everyone's saying it's also better than Broadway, which I found quite interesting and it was really good, you know, Ryan was Hades', um, big scary boomy voice. Um, April 2nd, I had another track meet versus Casa Grande. Um, April 9th, I had another track meet, uh, versus Vintage. I'm currently PR-ing at every meet. Um, my long jump is currently at 15 two, uh, 15 feet, two inches, and then my triple jump's at 32 inches, three feet. I'm trying to break the school record, but I'm currently ranked on top 10, um, of our school's distance and something. I don't know exactly where I'm ranked, but that's what my coach told me. This week at ACHS, we are celebrating multicultural week. This year, we decided to celebrate the different aspects of our culture that make us all unique. So Monday, we celebrated food, Tuesday was music, Wednesday was art, Thursday was fashion. We had a club walk today. This is the freshest in my mind. We had our MSA Club, Muslim Student Association, Korean Cultural Club, Filipinex, American Club, and then art come and display things in the quad for everyone to look around. And then Friday tomorrow is unity and diversity where we just kind of celebrate all of our differences that make us all special. Um, another thing going on during school in my English class, we are on a unit about juvenile justice and whether youth should be tried as adults. So we're examining different cases and legal proceedings, which I find quite interesting and we're having some really good discussions in class. Um, I have officially decided to commit to Xavier University, Louisiana with a $14,000 annual scholarship. Um, Ryan Cooper, oh, um, Ryan Cooper, I just want to say that he's one of the most phenomenal young men that I know. I have had the pleasure of knowing him since preschool. We've followed each other since, from private school all the way to American Canyon and you should definitely go and check out his stop-motion Lego videos because they take him hours upon hours to create and his productions have really shown off with his 37,000 subscribers. And then next week, we are all very excited that it's spring break, finally. Uh, I know my mind, my body, and my brain are very, very, very tired and I'm looking forward to having this week break. And that concludes my report.
Thank you and happy birthday and congratulations. Trustee Water?
Speaking of tired brains, okay, let's see, right after the last board meeting, I went to see, uh, As You Like It at Napa Valley College. It has, it had several, um, Napa Valley Unified School District, uh, students in the cast. It was, uh, very creative. I enjoyed it tremendously. And then, um, the, early in the week, I visited with the principal at Phillips Elementary to thank, uh, her and the, uh, Parents Club for their support for the school bond. And, um, as, um, Trustee Wade Grabett said, I did attend the Napa County Office of Education meeting at, where they honored the, um, ACHS decathlon winners and that was, you know, very nice of them and it was, it was so much fun and, um, Trustee Chu's son was utterly hilarious. Uh, gave a wonderful speech. And let's see, um, then I also went to see, um, the ACH, HES, ACHS play, Hades Town, and I'm sorry Ryan isn't here to hear me praise him for his performance. It is certainly, uh, I think, uh, American Canyon High School has a very high dramatic standard, uh, and all their plays are worthwhile seeing and they frequently have kind of edgier, more unusual plays. And I think in all the years I've gone, this is the top of the top. It was, uh, an amazing production. I thought that the, I thought that the set designs were, um, worthy of, um, Berkeley Rep, American Conservatory Theater. It was, they were, it was incredible and Ryan was stunning. He has, um, he is a wonderful villain, a wonderful villain, uh, sort of a tragic villain. And then, um, uh, let's see, I went to the Pueblo Vista Elementary Pollinators Workshop and where I saw, wow, talk about feeling old, I ran into, um, the children of, uh, former students, you know, who were presenting. So that was fun and, um, uh, yesterday I ran, I ran over to, um, Camille, I was invited to Camille Creek School's, um, luncheon, uh, because yes, uh, this is Arab American Heritage Month and Officer Omar of the Napa, City of Napa Police Department gave an extremely interesting presentation, um, about his life story. His family came from Iraq and, um, the, and it was the, uh, and he told the students about the intersection of Arab, Spanish, and Mexican culture. And here's a big hint, it's not all Salma Hayek. And we had a lovely lunch. And, uh, I'd like to add that this month, April, is National Poetry Month, Serita Poem, and, uh, it's also National Library Week, so go patronize your library while we still have them. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Trustee Jenkowitz?
Well, this will be a short board report as I've had the good fortune of being out of town, seeing my children for a week. I attended via Zoom the NCOE meeting as well. I attended, um, by Zoom, the Mike Thompson Update Call. I had a meeting with the Regional Director of Area 1 to discuss issues that we would like to bring forth to trustees in Area 3 and one of the area focus will be the governance work done by NVUSD. I met with our CSBA Pacer to discuss educational advocacy opportunities for boards and how do we best leverage those opportunities? I too attended the PV Pollinator Showcase. It was outstanding as it is every year. I was in the third grade classroom and every parent that asked a question asked in Espanol. It was great. I spent time addressing K-8 issues with a constituent and it was an excellent exercise in understanding the criteria, the contributing factors beyond our control and those are, well, those that are well within our control. And I look forward And I look forward to Director Miller's presentation that substantiates the process and considerations. Congratulations to ACHS Winter Percussion on their NCPA Division Championship win and to the Winter Guard who placed second in their division. Like all my peers, I continue to field numerous questions from our community, and throughout the years, the community engagement continues to increase. So I choose to take that as a positive indicator of increasing interest in educational conversations between NVUSD and our greater community. I attended along with my peers our CSBA's Board Self-Evaluation, an important piece of our governance work. Last night, I attended the bond meeting at Vichy Elementary. I will never get tired of that presentation. And lastly, happy birthday to President Reiser.
Thank you, trustee Jenkowitz. Trustee Hart?
On the 30th, I actually was able to go see with my daughter Grace the American Canyon High School play of Haiti's Town, which I thought was extremely well done. Some of the talent in the students that performed in singing, dancing, the choreography, the set, everything was extremely professional. And I definitely think my daughter was inspired to continue down her road with choir by hearing what some of these kids are able to accomplish just a few short years away from how old she is now. The next day, excuse me, on the 31st, I attended the Extended Learning Opportunities Program Summer Enrollment Event, which I found to be extremely helpful as a working parent of a young child. It's great to have so many options put in one spot for us to take a look and see what's available for us over the summer months. So we're looking forward to taking advantage of several of those programs. On the 1st, I attended along with several representatives from the district, along with Dr. Macedi, a parent meeting at Willow Elementary to discuss the TK-8 model. The next night, I attended again at Vichy, a discussion for their potential TK-8 expansion, and we'll hear it again tonight. So I have that one pretty much down pat at this point. On the 8th, attended the Special Board Meeting for the Board Self-Evaluation. And I would also like to point out, April being National Child Abuse Prevention Month, since we are in the business of educating children, I think it's important for us to know that this month is a time for communities and individuals to come together to raise awareness about child abuse, its prevention, and the importance of supporting families and children affected by it. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Hart. Let's see, I had on March 31st, a phone call with our CSBA Governance Consultant in advance of our Board Self-Evaluation Workshop. On April 4th, I participated in an outward leadership implementation coaching session along with Dr. Macedi and Vice President Chu. Very helpful coaching session, really appreciated that opportunity. On April 6th, I also had the opportunity to attend Haiti's Town at ACHS with my daughter. Unfortunately, or not unfortunately, but we happened to attend a show that was not Ryan's cast, the alternate cast. It was an incredible production, and my daughter Maya, on her Napa High Choir trip the last year, they went to a Broadway show while in New York, and they saw Haiti's Town. And she said it was comparable to the Broadway production. So that speaks to the level of talent and commitment of our ACHS Drama Department. Congratulations to Summer Hart and everyone involved in that production. It was really quite mind-blowing. On April 8th, I participated along with my colleagues in the Board Self-Evaluation Workshop facilitated by our CSBA Governance Facilitator. Yesterday, I had the opportunity, I got to bring my daughter along to that one too before she went back to Davis, the Pueblo Vista Pollinator Showcase. Every year is a big hit. I attended a kindergarten presentation and then a second grade presentation, learned an incredible amount about bees. I'm always blown away by not only the dual-language immersion aspect that's so impressive to see in action, but by the amazing leaders. I'm so sorry that I did not write down the names of the teachers that I observed, but the quality of the teachers was really impressive. What the students were able to show and demonstrate about their learning was amazing. So thank you to Principal Helen Roca for welcoming us every year for that. And then I also attended my regular president's meeting in advance of the board meeting with Dr. Macedi, and this concludes my report. So that brings us now to the, I'm not going to skip it this time like I always do, the Board Representative Committee reports. To A, Special Education Committee Advisory Committee.
We have not met.
Thank you. To B, the City of American Canyon Liaison, we have not met. To C, the City of Napa Liaison Representatives?
We have not met.
And then the Town of Yountville is still listed on the agenda, but I believe we're now to an annual meeting there.
Right.
So now, H3 Superintendent and Executive Staff.
Great. Thank you, President Reiser, and happy birthday. Thanks for spending it here at the dais. So hello, NVUSD trustees, staff, and community. I will start with sharing the highlights of today. I too was at the Pollinator Showcase in a first grade classroom at Pueblo Vista, watching those PV first graders present on the Monarch Butterflies alongside trustee Jenkowitz this morning. Using such high levels of academic language in both English and Spanish in front of a large public audience filled with teachers, parents, and community members was exceptional. Observing their cognitive flexibility between both languages, their critical thinking, and application of academic vocabulary in the two languages was such a reminder of the power, the impact, and the benefits of dual-language immersion education, and I am so grateful and proud to have that program option TK-12 here in NVUSD. I also had the opportunity today to surprise Napa High School teacher Martha Calderon alongside Dr. Nemko and the NCOE team during her Avid class this morning. We informed Ms. Calderon that she has been selected as Napa County Teacher of the Year.
Yay!
Yay! Congratulations, Ms. Calderon. The high expectations you have for your Avid and ELD students sets them up for extraordinary progress and success beyond high school. It's no surprise that your impact on their educational lives, on the educational lives of NHS students is being recognized and honored with this special distinction. We are so proud of you, and we know she's going to represent in the state-level competition for State Teacher of the Year. The rest of my report tonight is dedicated to our four middle schools here in Napa Valley USD. Later in the agenda tonight, we'll be providing an update about our TK-8 programs and as the district teams, I'm sorry, and as the district learns from the pilot TK-8 programs at both Shear and Browns Valley and considers potential expansion at Vichy, we hear a lot about what our comprehensive middle schools can or cannot offer our elementary students as they transition into their secondary education. And I wanted to provide a window into the great things happening at Silverado, Redwood, Unidos, and American Canyon Middle School this evening. Our middle schools can provide our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders so much, and I actually have some slides that I think you're going to get up for me. So I had the pleasure of doing some visits and engaging in conversations with our middle school principals, and we're going to capture some of the latest happening at our four amazing middle schools. So I'm really excited to share some of the exciting learning and activities taking place at these four sites. Next slide. We'll start at American Canyon Middle School. It's truly inspiring to see the dedication and creativity of our students and staff. In the arts, the ACMS Ceramics Program is flourishing, with students diligently preparing impressive pieces for the upcoming ACMS Art Show. You see them there on the left. Take a sneak peek at some of the work. I must say, the talent on display there is remarkable. The performing arts at ACMS are also thriving. The Theater Department is in the final stages of preparing their spring play, and I encourage you to support their hard work. Additionally, ACMS music ensembles are preparing for their spring music concert. We wish them the very best as they showcase their musical talents, and remember, those are the students that continue to ACHS to do some of the great production work that you are all talking about. Next slide. Our ACMS Robotics Class is engaging in a fascinating nothing-to-something innovative project. This hands-on initiative encourages our students to think critically and design solutions, even seeking valuable feedback from community members on their innovative ideas. This real-world connection is invaluable. Next slide. Beyond the classroom, our leadership students recently organized a successful trimester rally demonstrating their organizational skills and school spirit. Next slide. And sometimes, look at that, the work is really fun. Next slide. ACMS students are also sharing the news that students need to know in their weekly Wildcat video series. I encourage you to check it out on the ACMS social media channels. It's engaging, fun, and truly showcases our ACMS Wildcat spirit. I wish we had time to watch this impressive video, but we're not going to do so now. Next slide. Finally, I'd like to highlight the recent ACMS 8th Grade Career Fair, where all NVUSD middle school students there had the opportunity to explore potential future pathways. This exposure is crucial in helping our students begin to envision their academic and professional journeys. It's clear that ACMS is a vibrant and dynamic learning environment, and I commend the students, teachers, and staff for their hard work and dedication. We look forward to seeing the fruits of their efforts in the upcoming art show, play, music festival, and beyond. So great things, next slide, are also happening at Redwood Middle School, where our 8th grade students recently embarked on an enriching field trip to Jack London State Park on March 27th. Despite some afternoon rain, the students had a fantastic day exploring the park through a multidisciplinary lens, connecting literature, science, history, math, and physical fitness in a unique learning experience. Next slide. Redwood administrators showcased these opportunities and so much more during their annual open house hosted on Tuesday, April 8th, just earlier this week. Redwood staff warmly welcomed also their incoming 5th grade students and families. This important event provided an opportunity for them to begin their secondary school journey by hearing from current students and staff, enjoying engaging student performances and touring at Redwood Middle School in several open classrooms that evening. Next slide. Looking ahead, the Redwood Middle School community will hold a rally tomorrow, Friday, last day before spring break, dedicated to celebrating the performing arts. Our talented Redwood Middle School students from the RMS Band and Dance Classes will be joined by students from the Vintage High School programs to provide an entertaining showcase for the entire student body. It's a great way to end before spring break. I wish them all the best and look forward to continuing to see the strong student-centered work happening at Redwood Middle School. Next slide. Unidos Middle School continues to showcase their strong commitment to student well-being and academic success. The 8th Grade WEB, and WEB stands for Where Everyone Belongs, program recently facilitated a check-in for 6th grade students on Friday, April 4th. This event, featuring interactive bingo led by Mrs. Bonta and Ms. Zorn, represents the program's ongoing efforts to provide consistent support and foster a sense of belonging for younger students. This marks at least the fourth occasion this year where 8th grade leaders at Unidos have connected with 6th graders. Next slide. Administrators at Unidos have also engaged in focused data dialogues with students who approached proficiency on the 23-24 CASP. And after talking to Principal Uribe in our own data dialogue discussion with her here at the Ed Center, I want to say this was approximately 80 students, during a dedicated CASP boot camp for these students, they received guidance on interpreting their assessment reports from last year. They reviewed their scores and collaborated with administrators to establish personalized goals for the upcoming assessments that they'll be taking after spring break. And next slide. The school community celebrates the continued success, I bet you didn't know this, of the Unidos badminton team, which has maintained an undefeated record for the third consecutive year, highlighting the athletic prowess of the students there. So go Otters. And lastly, Unidos recently also hosted its annual open house on Tuesday, April 8th. I think you missed that, trustee Hart. She was being a trustee with me out at Willow at the engagement rigging there, but she is a soon-to-be Unidos parent. The event welcomed both current students and rising 6th graders, providing an opportunity for prospective families to engage in classroom visits and establish early connections with future teachers. This initiative aids in familiarizing incoming students with the campus and facilitates a smoother transition to middle school. Alrighty, so from competitions galore on ACMS's campus to open houses at both Redwood and Unidos Middle School, great things are happening in NVUSD, and the same is definitely true at Silverado Middle School. I'm pleased to share a brief video that highlights the improvements made to Silverado Middle School's E-Wing after a storm last spring damaged the building. This work involved not only roof repair, but also essential cleanup, flooring replacement, and extensive maintenance and operations efforts. Recognizing an opportunity for additional improvements, we expanded the scope to include new HVAC units, furniture, and repainting, effectively executing an emergency repair and interior modernization simultaneously under separate contracts to maximize improvements. Our Silverado community has shared their excitement to move back into the beautifully renovated E-Building over spring break. Check it out for yourself. Let's play the video. Okay, you're good there. Yep, we're good, we're good. Okay, next slide. Silverado Middle School site administrators are also actively listening to our students' voices, particularly their strong preference for hands-on learning and field trips, as articulated in a recent Community Schools Needs and Assets Survey conducted by the administration. In response, they've prioritized these experiences. Check out our avid 8th graders as they spent the day with Napa High avid 11th graders last week, shadowing, participating in classes, and learning about success in high school. Next slide. The collaboration continues at Silverado Middle School. Our gateway students immerse themselves in environmental learning at Point Bonita, participating in activities aligned with California Common Core, Next Generation Science and Literacy in History and Social Studies Standards. Next slide. In partnership with ACE After School, students recently enjoyed a unique STEM learning experience in San Francisco, followed by a lesson in mathematics of baseball at a Giants game. And last month, Silverado, next slide. And last month, Silverado 6th graders gained a deeper understanding of environmental stewardship and sustainable resources through a visit to Napa Sanitation, where they learned about our community's recycling and water treatment processes. Beyond these enriching field trips and hands-on activities, our Silverado Middle School students continue to excel on campus in sports, the arts, clubs, and academics. Recognizing the challenges of adolescents, we are particularly proud of the positive impact of Silverado's wellness spaces and supports, which are highly valued by our students as they navigate these important years. Here are a few more photos that showcase all that is Silverado Middle School. Next slide. There you see the arts. And the next slide, the last slide. I hope the photos that I've shared this evening, along with the commentary, illustrate and demonstrate just a few of the ways that we're working towards serving students by actively working to achieving our NVUSD vision, specifically at the middle school level. We're cultivating confident, compassionate, and adaptable middle schoolers, prepared for life, and before that, high school, of course, and ready to advocate for themselves and their communities. That's the end of my slideshow, so thank you so much. I really enjoyed collaborating, visiting, and engaging in discussions with our middle school principals at the four comprehensive sites. Next board meeting, I'll be sharing about some of the middle school sports programs that we added as a result of our middle school redesign initiative from three years ago. And then just in honor of Earth Day, I want to let everybody know, as I conclude my report, that NASH is hosting its Second Annual Plastic Free Lunch on Monday, April 22nd. I know you're happy. I know you're happy about that, trustee Warner. The team is creating a special menu and salad bar that eliminates the need for any single-use plastic cutlery, reducing waste and promoting sustainability. This effort reflects NVUSD's commitment to environmental responsibility and our core value of fostering a future-ready culture of innovation. Join us in celebrating our planet and modeling sustainability for our students. And lastly, I'd like to just close my report this evening with wishing our NVUSD staff, students, and families a restful, joyful spring break. I know this one was later in April, and it's been a very long wait. Please recharge and enjoy the beautiful spring weather. We will only have seven weeks before the 2425 school year comes to a close after we return from spring break. With that, I am going to pass it on to the assistant supers, who are going to report on the work that they oversee in their respective areas. So, we'll start with Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
Thank you. Good evening, President Reiser, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member Grayden, and Dr. Masetti. Before I dive into my report, I just want to echo the excitement and pride that Dr. Masetti expressed about Martha Calderon being selected as Napa County Teacher of the Year. It was a fun event to be able to celebrate many of our talented teachers, but to have her rise to the county level and be put before the state for her wonderful, talented ability to work with students and her commitment and dedication to making sure that every student has every possible opportunity to achieve and follow the path that's best for them is amazing. And I'm super happy that we're having a high school teacher be recognized, it's been a long time. So, very excited about that, and I'm sure there'll be more to come and more celebration in the future. On Monday, April 7th, all NVUSD employees were invited by email to participate in the Spring Wellness Challenge, which is sponsored by our partners at North Bay Schools Insurance Authority. The theme for this challenge is Star Trek, inspired by humanity's quest for the stars and, of course, health and wellness. This optional four-week challenge runs from April 21st to May 18th, and registration opened on Monday, April 7th, but it's never too late to sign up. Employees can join individually or in teams, and family members are welcome. Participants track daily activity like walking, yoga, or gardening on the Star Trek website or app with steps converted automatically. Reaching your goals earns you stars, badges, and leaderboard spots. Throughout the challenge, you will receive fun trivia, recipes, and more. Those meeting fitness goals are entered to win $100 gift card, and the top district earns the shoe trophy. So, sign up, get moving, and enjoy this fun challenge. Also this month, we are featuring six new staff spotlights on the NVUSD website. This month, we are shining the spotlight on the following employees: Anna Gonzalez, who's an administrative secretary at the Napa Valley Adult Education; Teresa Huntington, a independent facilitator at Snow School; Arturo Aguayo, the head custodian at Valley Oak; and Summer Hart, teacher at American Canyon High School; Stephanie Trot, teacher at Redwood Middle School, who I think I saw in one of those photos; and Megan De La Mater, the new principal at Napa Junction Elementary School. These spotlight stories are found by typing "staff" in the spotlight when searching our NVUSD website and are part of our Working for NVUSD page. And finally, I'd like to wish all employees, students, and families a very restful and happy spring break. I know it was a long time coming this year, and I know everyone is extremely ready for it. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
I know you feel ownership since you oversee the calendar, Dana.
Thank you, thank you for highlighting that.
We won't hold you responsible for the long wait. A was a committee, yes, that happened in committee. Okay, and next, we're going to hear from Dr. Monica Ready, our Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services.
Good evening, President Reiser, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member Grayden, Superintendent Dr. Masetti, and NVUSD community. The NVUSD Instructional Support Services Team and school sites continue to focus on college and career readiness, as outlined in our NVUSD Strategic Plan Strategies 1 and 3. First, Avid continues to be a hallmark of our approach to strengthening college and career readiness through high-impact instructional strategies. In March, with the support of Noel Knight, our Avid Implementation Strategist, the Instructional Support Services Team alongside principals engaged in a learning walk at both Napa Valley Language Academy and Browns Valley TK. We were able to see Avid at work in classrooms by seeing the use of planners, focus note-taking, and graphic organizers. It was a wonderful opportunity to see how aspects of Avid implement student learning in their lives. We also thank Director Coro, Principal Osborne, and their staff for allowing us to explore the learning that happens in their classroom every day. We continue to invest in Avid professional learning to support students with Avid strategies. Executive Director Matt Manning, Director Mario Landeros, Principal Elizabeth Coro, and Avid lead teacher Martha Calderon attended the Avid District Director Leadership Training. This learning opportunity focused on building instructional leadership, strengthening systems of support, and aligning Avid practices with our district priorities. The team is energized to bring back tools and strategies to deepen our Avid implementation across NVUSD. The Elementary Language and Literacy Community Practice held its final meeting of the year. This group of district specialists, principals, and letters-trained educators collaborated to define the essential elements of effective elementary literacy instruction. Their work will guide a coherent district-wide approach to Tier One instruction, which is grounded in the science of reading, and centered on strong word recognition and language comprehension practices. The Instructional Leadership Team met on March 27th to reflect on progress toward NVUSD's Strategic Plan Goal Number One. This year's work has included building an understanding of guaranteed and viable curriculum, strengthening our focus on grade-level rigor through learning walks, and supporting PLCs with tools for high-impact Tier One instruction. The team also began shaping the vision for our NVUSD High-Impact Instructional Model, identifying both opportunities and potential barriers to implementation. Data continues to be at the center of our decision-making as we seek to create a culture of student data usage. In our second round of NVUSD data dialogues, principals presented interim data and progress toward CASP goals using STAR ELA and Math 1R data. Their collaborative analysis and action planning, school leaders are modeling NVUSD's values, serving as critical thinkers and reflective learners. Their commitment to building collective teacher advocacy through data cycles is helping drive meaningful growth for our students. The MTSS District Advisory Committee convened on April 3rd to sharpen our focus on the connections between MTSS and response to intervention. The group is now focused on refining Tier One prevention strategies, defining Tier Two intervention blocks, and selecting a pilot platform to support assessment and MTSS coherence. This strategic reset positions us to finish the year with renewed clarity and momentum for next year. Finally, I want to congratulate our juniors, who participated in SAT School Day over the past week. NVUSD High School administers the SAT to all juniors during the School Day at no cost to students. This is an important milestone in supporting students' college and career readiness. The SAT provides students with valuable insight into their academic strengths, aligns them with potential career paths, and enhances opportunity for post-secondary success and financial stability. I want to thank the teams of administrators and counselors who made that possible for them, and I wish everyone a happy spring break. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Ready. Next, we have Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala, who oversees business and operational services.
All right, for tonight, I have a very short presentation, a picture. We'll actually show it a little better, so give me one second to get that out. Thank you very much for the opportunity to update the board and the community. Next slide, please. So, one of the things that we've been working on in the operations side is really ensuring that the employees have the right tool for the job. And so, when I started, we had lots of complaints about our fields. This has been an ongoing thing. And some of my discussions with the managers was that they needed more employees, and I was pretty opposed to adding employees back there. And it kind of felt like we just needed to get some better equipment to really make sure that we had the right tool for the right job. And so, this is a tremendous device here. It looks like a quad that could drive on the snow. I mean, it's incredible. Why is it so incredible? And it literally takes us about a half of the time to take care of a field with this piece of equipment versus another one. In addition to that, it allows us to drive on a wet field. So, one of the problems that you have with fields is that the typical equipment that you use, you have to wait for the field to dry out. By the time it dries out, the weeds are up to your knees, and it's really hard to get caught up on it. And so, this piece of equipment, it allows us to mow on a wet field. It also has a number of attachments, I think that's called a clopper on the back. It's what we use in the infield, in our baseball fields. It mows them, just makes it much nicer for kids. And so, we found that we've used this quite a bit. Some of our fields, we've hit with that clopper. We found just because it's rained so much, we have to go back and then hit it again, maybe two weeks later, because we get weeds to grow up in there again. But it just made a tremendous difference for our community and for employees. Next slide. So, this is a picture that just shows what it looks like. The one on the left, you can see just, you know, the infield wasn't really defined after running the equipment. You can see on the next series slides, in the middle and to the right, just the enormous difference is made. Next slide. Here's another example, this is from Vintage, this is JV Field of Vintage. And so, you can just see again what it's done for the infield. And this was done in one day with one person, so really made an enormous difference. Next slide. So, this is a tool that we've had for a little bit, but I've had the opportunity over the last year to just really see some of the work that happens in the background. Just the silent work that this incredible team does that no one realizes happens. And so, you know, when you have pipes that are 56-year, 50, 60-years-old, they just break suddenly. And so, when they break underground, you don't necessarily know right away that they're broken. What happens is they might break halfway. In this case, on Kennedy Way, we had just moisture that started to show up in the middle of the pavement there on Kennedy Way on a sunny day. So, we knew there was something that was going on, and so, they may start the dig with a tractor or something like that, or a backhoe. But when you get near pipes and you get near electricity or you get near gas, you can't use equipment like that. So, what you see there, the ditch which, it's literally a big power washer with a big vacuum attached to it. It's literally a vacuum. And so, what it does is it just sucks the dirt out of the hole. So, it just makes it a lot safer for employees and for students. They have the ability to get this work done in the middle of the workday without interrupting services. So, they were able to prep it, get it ready, replace the portion of pipe right after school and into the weekend. Next slide. This is just another picture of that, of how many people were working on this massive water leak that we had on Kennedy Way. Next slide. This is an example of what it looked like, actually getting into the hole and just the work that they had to do to get around that pipe and do it in a safe manner. Next slide. So, this is a lift, they're pretty common to see, but we're trying to get more of them. So, the advantage of having a lift is we can do projects like you're seeing going on in the front of the district office, where we're doing some painting over spring break. You can also use this for our LED light project, and so, we're working pretty closely with our custodians to upgrade all of our light bulbs from fluorescent to LED to meet modern environmental standards. Next slide. So, this picture depicts using a ladder, but there's plenty of spots that we need to lift for. So, again, working closely with our custodians to replace the bulbs across the district, and the district will save significant dollars in electricity, and not hiring a contractor from the outside will also save money that way. Next slide. This example on the left is a small truck crane. We'll replace a piece of fencing, or I should say, we put up a temporary piece of fencing at PV over the weekend. We will be putting a permanent fence at PV. It'll take a little time, we've had to wait for it to kind of dry out a little bit. Our plan is to put up a wood fence, so gives a nice visual barrier between the actual, the school district and the house back there. So, there's a little more privacy for the students and even the community there in the background. The center picture and the right picture, it's a progress picture, you can see it Phillips. So, we did replace the blacktop at Phillips earlier this year. That's what it looks like now. We'll be doing that for Pueblo Vista over spring break. So, next week, Pueblo Vista will receive additional pavement work. Next slide. So, this depicts the Redwood Back Parking Lot. So, the Redwood Back Parking Lot, we have received very significant community complaints about that. You will see an agenda item on tonight's agenda to approve a contract to have this work done. So, the planning, it takes some time for this. So, we've been planning on this over the last year. We hired an architect and a civil engineer to come up with the plans. I bid the project and ended up having to bid it a second time to try and get some savings. I did get about $75,000 in savings. You'll see in this picture that it doesn't look like there's some blacktop there, but the blacktop is in such bad shape that we actually need to take out 10 inches of blacktop and bring in gravel in order to just even put it in the pavement. So, that back parking lot, it's in very poor shape. Our community uses it a lot on the weekend, especially when they come to see soccer games, and I have had a lot of complaints where people just don't have the ability to drive their cars through this back parking lot. Next slide. So, going into some of this stuff and just reminding the board and the community about what's happening with the bond. I did have the credit rating call today in order to get the district's credit rating. I should have the initial credit rating within about a week, so we'll kind of know where we go with that. I always demand for better, right, so we'll see what happens. Just as a reminder, we are selling three tranches of bonds, so $80 million this May, another 70 in 2027, followed by the final tranche in 2930. And then, just a reminder, just some of the reasons why a bond program takes five to six years. So, we don't receive $230 million suddenly in account and can get to work. So, we receive the money over a series of issuances. So, by issuing the money over a series of time, we save the taxpayers dollars. So, an equivalent example would be if you took out a home equity line on your house, and maybe you wanted to spend $100,000 on your house, and right in front of you, you're looking at your kitchen, and that only spent, that only cost $50,000. So, you wouldn't write a check to yourself for $100,000, because you would start paying interest on that right away. So, by issuing the bonds over three series, you save the taxpayers money. And again, we will hit that below $22 for $100,000 of assessed value. Next slide. So, again, the planning process also has a role in this. And so, some projects take anywhere, again, nine to 18 months, depending on the project. Again, the parking lot is an example of one that's taken almost a year to get to the planning project, with the work being done in June, so beginning to end, that'll be an example of 12 months. We do work with a lot of different contractors and architects. So, we employ as many people as we can find to get this work done in a timely manner, but it's still going to be five to six years to get the work done. Next slide. So, as a reminder of what's coming up this summer, so HVAC, roofing, and paint. Next slide. So, the sites that we're working on are Browns Valley, McPherson, Phillips, Pueblo Vista, Shear, West Park, Vichy, and Silverado. Also, as a reminder, and again, we are working on a formal communication, the sites will be completely closed to the public, meaning people will not have the ability to walk their dogs, use the play structures. There's just too much going on, it is unsafe for the public. So, these facilities will be completely closed. No facilities rentals and no casual users of either of the facilities up there. Next slide. So, what's next in the immediate future? So, we are working on play structures. So, we're in the process of analyzing our play structures. And again, we're only replacing play structures that need it. So, it's not based on my opinion. We're hiring an architect to go and analyze all the play structures, along with the pavement near the play structures, with the goal of replacing as many as possible, but again, only ones that need it. And we're looking at bringing a recommendation, or I should say, the analysis component of the recommendation to the May Facilities and Technology Committee. So, we'll have some information where we bring the analysis. Once we're done with that, we still need to formally bid these projects, and we'll need to hire a contractor for it. So, again, we're in the initial planning phase. I wouldn't anticipate this work starting. I would say at this point, probably by the time we get moving, it probably will be the spring at the earliest, because we still have to hire a contractor. But again, this work is going full speed. Now, when I talk about the spring, I mean next spring, not this current spring, so about a year from now. Next slide. Oh, and can you go back a bullet? And then, one thing to point out too, so this is an example of work that does not have to be done over the summer. So, some things like roofing, HVAC paint, has to be done over the summer. But because we're not, we're just shutting down a portion of the yard to address a play structure, we do have the ability to do this during the school year. So, again, we'll know more once we get further along, because we are still in the analysis component. Next slide. So, what's coming up in the future? So, we are looking at parking lot replacement. And so, again, Redwood is on tonight's agenda. Silverado, future date, we are looking at Silverado, Vichy, Pueblo Vista, and Phillips. So, again, Redwood is planned for June, the remainder parking lots, we are in just beginning of the planning phases, so that'll probably be about a year out.
Rob, it says Redwood Backlot that the board will be approving tonight, June of 2026. That's a mistake.
Yeah, so what I meant to say for June of 2026 is that's when the work will begin. So, sorry, I wasn't clear enough. Yeah, so the work will begin in June of 26, not when they're approving it.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, it's on tonight's agenda. We have a contractor to do the work. So, you're approving the contract with the contractor to get the work done. And so, we have an actual start date from the contractor of June 10th of this year. Oh, you're right, I do have the wrong year.
That's what I thought. That's okay.
I can fix it, it'll disappear.
On the record, it's June 2025.
On the record, yeah, that's a mistake, yeah, sorry about that. Next slide. So, just a picture of what our roofing and HVAC looks like. Again, you can see it's in very poor shape. This is an example of what it looks like at Phillips. Next slide. This is some of the work, this is a slide from what we used to present to the community when we had a meeting at Phillips. And so, roofing, HVAC, smart thermostats, exterior paint. What you see down below, there is a point to windows that are not actually replaced. there is a point to windows that are not actually replacement of windows. It's just a color scheme that we're trying to point out. So you can see, this is an example of what the color scheme will look like at all of our schools. We will be painting all of our schools the same color where there's not the options of different colors. It just creates a maintenance nightmare when you have different colors. So they'll all be the same. Next slide. So this is, again, as we march to June, lots of work's going on, just in preparation for, you know, full school closure. We are going out to school sites and reviewing each individual presentation with school sites that are being impacted. Again, schools will be completely shut down June 10th. No one will be allowed on the site other than the custodian and the principal. No teachers on site, no visitors. As a side note, Raiders Field will also be closed. So we're closing Raiders Field for maintenance on 5/22. Next slide, and I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Manguala, for that detailed report and everything that's happening with our facilities and fields. That concludes staff reports for the evening. President Reiser.
Thank you, Dr. Masetti. That brings us to I, Approval of Consent Agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on roll call vote unless the discussion of items is requested by a board member.
Move to approve.
Motion by Trustee Hart, a second by Trustee Water. Do we have any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Ms. Morales, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, student board member Grayden.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to J, Presentations and Discussion Items. J1A, J1 Business Services, J1A TK-8 Program Feasibility and Update.
All right. Good evening, President Reiser, Board of Trustees, student trustee Grayden, Dr. Masetti. This evening, I'm going to share an analysis of the TK-8 pilot at Shear and Browns Valley Elementary Schools and update, and share an update with you on the feasibility of TK-8 expansion. So during this presentation, I'm going to go over the history of the TK-8 Pilot Program, share the framework for future expansion, look at the open enrollment demand for middle school options and review Vichy Elementary School as a location for future TK-8 expansion. So in NVUSD, TK-8s emerged as part of the 2021 Middle School redesign process. So the initial pilots at Shear and Browns Valley were a direct response to community interest in small school options that emerged during the school closure and consolidation that took place. Shear and Browns Valley were selected to pilot the TK-8 program based on enrollment data and also based on their ability to absorb the impact of the closures of River School and Harvest Middle School. Shear was selected as the initial pilot site to promote equity in our system and to also absorb that impact of school closure. So Shear is one of our schools with the highest level of need. It has one of the highest unduplicated accounts in the district. Geographically, Shear is located about one mile from the Harvest campus. Shear was also a very significant feeder to Harvest Middle School. So many of the families in that neighborhood were impacted by the closure of that school. The pilot began with one cohort in the 21-22 school year. The TK-8 model is ideally two cohorts. But again, as a response to the closure and consolidation of schools, we opened at Shear with one, with just one cohort. But two cohorts have been added in each subsequent year. Browns Valley was added to the pilot in the 22-23 school year to further absorb the impact of school closure and consolidation. So in, for Browns Valley, their entire attendance area matriculated to Harvest Middle School. And they were also the biggest feeder into River School overall. So kind of a double impact for the Browns Valley community there. Geographically, also, their location was good. It's on the west side of Napa, close to the Harvest Middle School area. And that pilot began with two sixth-grade cohorts and has increased by two cohorts each year. They'll graduate their first eighth-grade class next month. So demand for our TK-8 program shows that this TK-8 model is a viable and sustainable small school option for middle school families in NVUSD. Demand has been on an upward trend since 22-23. On an average, 80% of fifth-grade families at Shear choose to stay for middle school. There's a little bit of a lower open enrollment demand for Shear. But again, because the neighborhood has very high needs, the families choose to stay, it's worth running it at a smaller size. Browns Valley, an average of two-thirds of the families stay for middle school. And it's open enrollment demand that makes up the rest of those cohorts. So each of the last two years, open enrollment has resulted in a waitlist for the Browns Valley sixth-grade class. Here's the current enrollment data for both Browns Valley and Shear. You can see that Browns Valley has a full sixth-grade cohort of 64 coming in next year, plus they have a waitlist. The class maximum increases for seventh and eighth grade. And you can see that they have picked up, during open enrollment, they have picked up a few more students. Shear has its largest sixth-grade cohort coming in next year. And they're retaining about all of their students, current sixth and seventh-grade students into next year. So their retention is looking really good. We take a look at the demographics of Shear. You can see that it is one of our highest needs schools in the district with an unduplicated count of above 95%. Unduplicated students are those students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, students who may be experiencing homelessness or foster youth, and are multilingual learners. Here's a look at Shear's demographics broken down by unduplicated category. So remember that students are only counted once, although they may qualify in multiple categories. We take a look at the demographics of Browns Valley. Their unduplicated count is close to 40%. And you can see that broken out here by category. So when we consider future expansion of the TK-8 model, contextual factors of today, along with what we've learned through the pilot, need to be considered when we're making these decisions. And the following framework should be used when considering expanding an elementary school to a TK-8 option. So the framework includes considering the current site room utilization, right? A site needs to have about six classrooms available over a three-year period to become a TK-8 school. Site needs, the site needs to have low enrollment or be experiencing severe declining enrollment. The impact on existing site initiatives and programs needs to be considered. We also need to consider the geographic location and whether or not there's program saturation around that school. And then also consider the demand from that community itself. So after processing all of our open enrollment requests for the 25-26 school year, is when it really emerged that the demand for middle school options exceeded the space that we had available for middle school students. So about 87% of the students who engage in open enrollment in our system do so at entry and transition points. So either at TKK, heading from fifth to sixth, or heading from eighth to ninth grade. And the largest cohort that engages with open enrollment are those students heading into middle school. So about 25% of our fifth-grade families engaged in open enrollment this year. So after our initial round of placements, there were still 100 students that remained on a waitlist for either Browns Valley, Redwood or Unidos. So we continue to assess our middle school options to ensure that we're competitive and responsive to the educational needs of our students and families. And it was this very high level of demand that prompted us to look at some and explore some other options for those waitlisted families this year. In March, we were able to offer some additional seats at Redwood. And you can see here that even after doing so, there are still 45 families on a waitlist for either Browns Valley or Unidos. So our reality is, especially in a declining enrollment environment, that is, that public schools, that we need to continue to be able to compete with private and charter schools. So here we can take a look at our projected enrollment for next year. You can see here where we're at right now in areas, where we're projected to be. There is a size difference that's going to increase a little bit next year between Redwood and Silverado. Unidos is at full capacity at about 600 students. And then we have really strong levels, strong enrollment numbers for both Shear and Browns Valley. So in response to that high demand and families remaining on those waitlists, we began to explore the option of Vichy as a TK-8 option in January. So Vichy does meet the framework criteria for expansion based on their current room utilization, their space on the Vichy campus for a TK-8 expansion. They are one of our lowest enrolled elementary schools with their total enrollment sitting just below 300. They don't currently have other programs and initiatives housed on their campus. Geographically, they're located on the east side of Napa. So they would not create any middle school program saturation by opening over there. And there's also a very strong interest from the Vichy community to have a TK-8 program at their school. Here we can take a look at the demographics of Vichy. 43% of their students are unduplicated. And then you can see how that breaks out by category. So there is strong demand for, a strong demand from families to attend sixth grade at Vichy this August. My team initially started making calls, doing some outreach to all Vichy fifth-grade families to determine their level of interest. We called all fifth-grade families who are on an open enrollment waitlist. In total, it was about 135 calls. So this resulted in 45 families sharing with us that they had a very strong interest in attending Vichy for sixth grade this August. 27 of those families are current Vichy families. And that is about two-thirds of their fifth-grade class, which is really similar to the trend I see at Browns Valley. We had 14 families on other waitlists express strong interest. And then we did have four families who do not currently attend NVUSD reach out and say that they were very interested as well. So what are the next steps here? These next steps and guidelines were shared with the Vichy community at a meeting last Wednesday evening. So in order for them to open with a sixth-grade class in 25-26, they need to meet a target of 55 to 60 students who are very interested. We're continuing to communicate with families about this option. There was something in the family newsletter that went out tonight. And we're going to reassess the enrollment demand on May 1st. So after that, if the target is met, staff will come back to the board and make a recommendation that the program move forward for the 25-26 school year. And if the target is not met, staff will come back and recommend that the board move forward with the program in the 26-27 school year. Happy to take questions?
Thank you so much, Ms. Miller. Before we engage in questions and comments from the dais, Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment on this presentation?
There is no public comment on the presentation.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions from trustees?
I just have a quick comment, only because I have been receiving feedback from our community. And so I just wanted to address it, I guess, from my perspective, if you don't mind. And thank you very much for the presentation. I guess I look at the K-8 decision through this lens, through kind of the work that's been done over the last seven years, starting with a lot of hard decisions seven years ago. And declining enrollment is the culmination of numerous factors. So we have to look at the kind of cumulative impact. And that is why understanding how declining enrollment intersects with retention, charters, school choice, financial sustainability, political uncertainty, funding uncertainty and student outcomes becomes so critical. We can no longer look at these issues through the same lens. As our current environment changes, so should our approach. It is the ability to understand that change within a new context that will allow us to be successful long term. There's always a calculated risk when there are some unknowns. And there are very few decisions in education that come with a guarantee. But our job is to assess the risk-reward ratio, assess the data we have available to us and give some credence to the more arbitrary conditions that sometimes present themselves if we deem viable. So our adaptability is critical to our ability to serve all of our students of NVUSD. So I appreciate your presentation as it kind of substantiates that thought process.
Thank you, Trustee Jankowicz. Other comments from the dais? Trustee Water, yes?
Right. I'm going to dawn the mantle of former trustee Joe Schonk and take us down memory lane 25 years ago. And I remember, because I was teaching at a 6, 7, 8 school known as American Canyon Middle School. And it was the only middle school that had sixth graders in it. And when the NVUSD decided to open up other middle schools to, and this was before they reopened Harvest, by the way, opened up the other middle schools to sixth graders, many parents went into a panic mode. They did not want their sixth-grade children associating with seventh and eighth graders who had apparently become, you know, radioactive libertines. And they were very frightened of exposing their children to the seventh and eighth graders. And all I can say is how things have changed. We're looking at adolescents as just a, it's an interesting stage in childhood. They are not pathological. They're just kids. And now people want their younger children associating with, you know, somewhat older kids. And in a way, you know, I think that's progress. I am, I do appreciate your thorough presentation. What is making me, you know, sort of inclined towards this is two factors. The big one is there is room at Vichy. Vichy is a smaller school. That neighborhood is not producing as many children as it used to. The residents are, you know, older than they were when I first moved to Napa County, which makes sense because I'm a lot older too. And so there is room. There's definitely room at the school. And when schools get really small, we start looking at closing them. And that is something I do not want to do. I want to keep our schools open. I want to have them filled with children. So, you know, this has given me a lot to think about. And thank you for this presentation. So, you know, this has given me a lot to think about, and thank you for this presentation.
Well, I just want to conclude the trustee commentary by thanking you for the report and just saying that I feel a lot of pride in the way our organization is, has been conducting itself and ourselves. You know, we got so much, there was a lot of tumult around the middle school redesign and the closures that we had to execute on a few years ago. That was early, very early on in my tenure as a trustee. But we really faced it with, you know, head-on with transparency and engaged the community at that time and, you know, came up with plans that were data-driven with the students' self, you know, students' best interests and the interests of the district, students across the district as a whole at the center, centering equity, and being as responsive as we can possibly be at all times to our community, to our students and families, and maximizing our resources. And so even when we have to execute on difficult decisions as we have, I believe that, I take pride in the way we meet the community with transparency and information and explanation. None of this is happening in sort of handshake deals behind closed doors about, oh, yeah, yeah, we'll take care of this part of town, or this section of the community. And I don't think that that was always the case in the decision-making that led us to, you know, some of the decisions that were made. So I just really appreciate that, you know, we do have to be responsive to the community. We heard loud and clear during the middle school redesign that our community wants options. There are great arguments to be made and data and evidence, anecdotal and qualitative and quantitative, about how powerful our larger comprehensive middle schools can be. I really appreciated seeing some highlights from Dr. Masetti's visits to our comprehensive middle schools. We know that our largest middle school in the district is also our highest-performing academically, ACMS. So we know that a large school does not mean a bad school or a school that doesn't meet students where they are and provide them opportunities. But we have also heard through the middle school redesign process and then what has unfolded over time with these TK-8 pilots, that there is a subset of our community that may appreciate that for other people's children or for themselves if their students advocating for themselves, but that really the smaller environment is where it's at for them. And so it's our responsibility to be as responsive as we can be to that need while still centering, maximizing our resources, being equitable, being data-driven. I really appreciated the clarity of the framework because I think it makes it easier for anyone who's interested in this issue to kind of have insight into the decision-making process. There's nothing random about this. There's nothing that this is, oh, well, I'm really good friends with this group of parents, and they're in my ear, and so, yeah, let's go for this program. It's utterly clear, logical, and data-driven. So I appreciate the engagement from across the community for the Willow parents who came and advocated and voiced what they were hoping for with their site, with the Vichy parents advocating again. You know, that is something that I am also proud of, of our organization and of our board, that we solicit that, we seek it out, we welcome it here in the boardroom, but we also to, you know, evidenced by trustee Hart and you yourself and Dr. Masetti going to two school sites this week. Was it this week or last week? Last week. And hearing out the community. So I just want to thank you and everyone involved in that effort, and trustee Hart for attending and representing the board in those spaces that last week, because that's how we have to operate, and that's our highest, our highest goal is to be transparent, collaborative, open partners in executing on the work of providing the best bang for our buck, keeping the dollars as close to students as we can, maximizing their educational experiences and their opportunities, and in this, in this context, maximizing the options that families have. So I'm excited to see how the Vichy community and others who might be interested in this as a possible option for next year respond. I appreciate that it was not an automatic, that we're, again, data-driven and waiting for the numbers and waiting to see if the demand is there. So thank you so much for that, and I look forward to seeing how this unfolds.
So thank you, Ms. Miller. I know we've been on the road show around this topic, you and I, and I want to appreciate your leadership and your tracking of the data in the enrollment office, which is so key to the district, drive, you know, drive so much of our decision-making. I think just a final statement that I'll make to close is that when we engaged in school closure, I can't believe it, but this month, it's four years ago that middle school closure happened. It was in April of 2021, and we had to make the difficult decisions, you know, and prior to that, we had sort of a quasi-school closure phase with American Canyon, because we can recall that at one point there was a consideration of adding an additional school on American Canyon. Again, the district not really using our enrollment data to drive a lot of these decisions. And as we centralized enrollment, got really tight on our enrollment processes, and used demographic projections more diligently, it became clear that the school district was operating too many middle schools for the number of students that we had with the proposed enrollment declines that have been, we've been living in that continue to be before us. And so, you know, operating too many small schools at middle school was not a viable option, especially at that time. I really want to emphasize like where we were, where we are, and where we're going. Where we were, the district was, you know, really having to engage in a large-scale rightsizing effort because, you know, we had structural deficits, we had declining enrollment, we had not, we didn't have systems in place to respond and address the decline that leads to declining revenues. And so at that time, we had to make some decisions while the district was sort of in a flight-or-fight mode, you know, when it came to resource management. And closing those schools were really difficult. We, in that process, like you said, President Reiser, we wanted to be responsive, and so we were trying to find a cost-effective way of meeting the demand, the small school demand that had been maybe historically meant through river school, for example. And we took a risk. We took a risk with the pilots. K-8s were new here. We took a risk with Shear and Brown's Valley. And when we converted the campus on Silverado to Unidos, because we centered dual, no, no, when we, what did I say? I'm sorry. Oh, Silverado, I'm sorry. On Silverado, on Salvador, I meant on the campus on Salvador to Unidos. We centered, we started out, some of the reports with highlighting the power of dual-language immersion in our Spanish immersion program, and we decided, the committee decided to center the TK through 12 DLI program and strengthen the middle years of that, and thus Unidos was born. And that was all really difficult, and those were all risks because they were new programs. But it's just important to fast-forward four years and see that those very programs have waitlists and are in high demand, while our other middle schools continue to thrive and have great programs and offerings for our students as well, all the great things that come with the comprehensive model. So I'm grateful that we're in the position that we're in while continuing to remain responsive. And part of the reality is, parents today do have a lot of options. They have homeschooling options, I know you hear about that, and in the enrollment office. They have online school options, they can homeschool. And we do have, you know, right now, our county office of education has been a champion for a small middle school charter school, and so it's important for us as a school district to maintain our stability and continue to be adaptive. And I'm grateful that we have a criteria and that we're using data to drive our responsiveness to the community. We'll continue to do that. And so we look forward to coming back to the school board on May 8th and making a potential recommendation. And again, I appreciate all your leadership in the work, Ms. Miller. So thank you so much. It's time for the break, yeah.
So looking at the clock, it is time for our quick five-minute break. We will be right back. Okay, welcome back, resuming our NVUSD board meeting. We are at K action items on the agenda. K-1, general services. K-1A, adoption of revised branded Napa Valley Unified School District Governance Handbook.
Move to approve.
Second.
The first from trustee Hart, second from trustee Water. Mr. Michaels, is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Student Board Member Grayden.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. K-2, business services. K-2A, annual bond audit reports, 2023-24.
Move to approve.
Second.
The first from trustee Hart, second by trustee Water. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. K-3, facility improvement. K-3A, FID 11.19-25 contract with Atlas Peak Construction.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Hart, second by trustee Water. Mr. Michaels, is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Student trustee Grayden.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. K-3B, FID 18.161-20 agreement for architectural services with Casa Studios.
Move to approve.
Second, sorry.
First from trustee Hart, second from trustee Water. Mr. Michaels, is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Student trustee Grayden.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. K-4, human resources. K-4A, declaration of need for fully qualified educators.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first from trustee Hart, second from trustee Water. Is there public comment on this item? Mr. Michaels.
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee Grayden.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. K-4B, ratification of memorandum of understanding with California Agricultural Teachers Induction Program.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Hart, second from trustee Water. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee Grayden.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. K-5, instructional services. K-5A, 2024-25 school plan for student achievement, SIPSA addendums.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Hart, second from trustee Water. Mr. Michaels, is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee Grayden.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. K-5B, agreement with Blue Note Napa.
Move to approve.
Second, and I am thrilled we can have proms locally.
Yeah, fun spot for a prom. So we have a first from trustee Hart, second from trustee Water. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee Grayden.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. K-5C, agreement with Lift Enrichment LLC.
Move to approve.
Second.
The first from trustee Hart, second from trustee Water. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee Grayden.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. K-5D, agreement with Cyber High.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from trustee Hart, second from trustee Water. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
No public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee Grayden.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. K-5E, ratification of agreement with Land Trust of Napa County.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Hart, second from trustee Water. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee Grayden.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. K-6, operational services. K-6A, FMO 19.01.2025 ratification of agreement with GP Environmental Solutions LLC.
Move to approve.
Second.
The first from trustee Hart, second from trustee Water. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee Grayden.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. K-6B, FMO 21.01.2025 Mixis Services, Inc., Rapid Router.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Hart, second from trustee Water. Mr. Michaels, do we have a public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee Grayden.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. L, informational, L1, general services. L1A, curriculum and student support committee, there was no meeting, so there are no minutes attached. L1B, facilities and technology committee, again, there was no meeting, so there are no minutes attached. L1C, finance committee, no meeting, no minutes attached. L1D, policy committee, again, no meeting, no minutes attached. L2, business services. 2A, the warrant register for accounts payable checks issued by NVUSD. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you so much. M, additional suggestions and comments from board members and superintendent.
Yes. I believe it was last week that trustee Martin and I and Director Manning attended a memorial service at Northwood for Damian and Aleah, two students who were killed in a car accident. And I thought the principal did a wonderful job at soothing a grief-stricken student body, and I would like us to have a moment of silence in memory of those children who are lost to us.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Water, and thank you for attending that service. Other suggestions or comments from board members? Okay, that brings us to N, future agenda items. Anything to offer? Okay, that brings us to O, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
The first from trustee Hart, second from trustee Water. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.